Good evening. Let me call City Council Meeting to Order, 7:00, January 22nd, year 2013. Thank you all for coming. I suppose we could go out and get more, we could fill up the seats if you create it upon us. I'm going to ask you please to stand for an invocation with Pledge of Allegiance. Let us bow our heads. Oh Heavenly Father, as we begin our work this new year, we thank you for giving us such a wonderful place to live, raise children, and enjoy each other. We thank you for our health, and we ask that you remember those sick. We thank you for our food, and we ask that you remember those hungry. We thank you for our freedom and our safety, and we ask that you remember those that serve to keep us free and safe. For it is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Very please call a roll.
Councilmember Redler.
Here.
Councilmember Battelli.
Here.
Councilmember Patton.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lott.
Yo.
Councilmember Stone.
President.
Councilmember Thomas.
He's here.
Thomas.
Oh, here.
Mayor Cronin.
President.
Administer Spencer Tucker.
Whoa, it's a new year. Man, did we get our names right?
Sorry.
Well, thank you for all attending. Full house. We're now at the point for a citizen's comments, so I'd like to ask if there's anybody here who would like to address council at this time. This is your opportunity. Going, going, okay. I'm going back to item two since I jumped ahead. Reading of the journals of previous meetings, you have in your package a regular meeting of November 27th, December 4th, and January 8th of this year. We have a motion to approve or amend.
Seconded.
Motion seconded. Any corrections, additions? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to reports from standing committees. I'll report on the Ways and Means Committee. We don't have minutes, but I'll try and recap the exciting times we have when we meet at Ways and Means. We met at 5:45 on January 15th. All members of committee were present. I was elected chair. Jimmy Ward was elected vice chair. We heard from our treasurer on our financial statements. Our expense target, we're six months into the year, which would mean 50 percent of expenses. We're currently running at 43 percent of expenses, which is very good, and that's the same percentage as we had prior year. So our expenses are in line and doing well. Our revenue is only 19 percent of budget, so it's well below budget. That's because we only have $91,000 from our property tax collection received through December, which is the last monthly statement that we were working on. The treasurer did report, however, that we received $969,000 in payment in the first part of, first two weeks of January from the treasurer's office, and therefore we're catching up rather quickly on our property tax. And our general fund cash balance is still sitting at 19 percent of general fund expenses, which is lower than we like, but well within the safety margin. So our revenues and expenses are coming together. On our tourism-related activities, our municipal ATAX for November and December was $73,000 versus $67,000 the prior year. Thus far, in FY '13, we're currently running 9 percent ahead of FY '12. We've had no state or county receipts in the past two months. And from a hospitality tax standpoint, we collected $68,000 in the month of November and December versus $47,000 in the prior year. And so our hospitality tax on FY '13 is running 19 percent ahead of FY '12. So the tourism funds keep clipping along. Under new business, we moved to the award of a contract to Sweeping South for our street sweeping. So I'd like to make a motion to award the contract to Sweeping South for street sweeping in the amount of $12,060. Seconded. Motion and seconded. Any discussion on the contract for Sweeping South? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We then went on to consideration of the parking lot lease. We heard presentations from the four bidders during the evening. They had been asked to come forward, and they did so and made presentations. It was decided at Ways and Means that we would rebid the lease for our parking, adding additional elements to our request. Since that meeting, the RFP has been posted and advertised and is out for public consumption. Bids are now due in on January 30th.
31st at 4:00.
At 4:00 PM. I didn't remember the time. Okay. And we will move with dispatch to evaluate those proposals. Hopefully they'll all be complete, and we'll be able to call special meeting, we'll probably have a special meeting of real property first and a meeting of council to award the contract. So from that, we moved on to discussion of the Water and Sewer Commission's initial plans to replace the water tower. Their plan was to replace the water tower with a 160-foot cellular tower monopole. And we heard presentations from the attorney representing the cellular service carriers. We also talked with the general manager of the Water and Sewer Commission. It was decided that by council, or by committee, that we would ask our city attorney to get with the attorney for the Water and Sewer Commission to get an understanding of the leases and the legal standings if we had gone forward. I can now report that subsequent to our meeting on Tuesday, Wednesday, the Water and Sewer Commission met, and they decided that they would keep the tower as it stands. They would refurbish it in place, keeping the cellular service as it currently exists, and work around it as they do their removal of the lead paint and other structural work that they feel they have to do. So basically, no change in the tower and no change in the cellular service that's being proposed, or being provided from the service. So an outcome that I didn't expect, but so be it. That's good. Our next meeting is set for 5:45 on February 19th. At 5:45, I'm going to advise everybody, and hopefully we can work to this, is that at 6:45 that evening, I would like to have a public input session incident to Live Oak Park. This is a part of the requirement, and having acquired Live Oak Park, we need public input, and what do we do with the park? So we're going to be contacting the citizens, all the citizens in the island, particularly the residents in that general area, to talk about what the park is going to look like once we do something with it, if anything. So we're going to have that public forum. Hopefully, everyone can attend, but it should be right after the Ways and Means meeting at 6:45.
What's that date?
On the 19th of February.
I just have a question about the agenda and a point of order. Do we not elect a mayor pro temp every year, or is that every other year?
You are right.
Whoops. Sweet. You're correct.
That should have been on the agenda for tonight.
Well, since it's not, can't we suspend the rules of order and place it on the agenda?
I would think so. I'm looking at my attorney here.
You know, I think since that is sort of a point of, I mean, it's more, you know, an usual rule, I think it's fine to do that. It's not like we're adding this to the agenda like, you know, I usually advise you not to add things under miscellaneous, but I think since this is more of a procedural type of thing or administrative type of thing, I think it's okay to go along that way.
Okay.
As long as everyone consents to adding it.
Nobody's going to not consent, so. Okay, let's open it up for nominations for mayor pro temp. Jimmy.
I nominate Ryan Buchanan.
Second.
Ryan, second. Any other nominations? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Okay.
Thank you.
You're on. Thank you, Jimmy.
Good catch.
That's the report from Ways and Maintenance. Questions, concerns? Nothing heard? Let's move on to public safety, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety Committee met Tuesday, January 8th. I was elected chairman. Councilmember Redler is our vice chair. First item was from members of the Turtle Team. Ann Bauer and Catherine Malloy presented a narrative on an incentive the Turtle Team is going to be doing to educate the children of Isle Palms and Sullivan's Island on the turtles. This will be for children that are under 12. And this will be held in April. They will do it on the front beach. It's not going to take any seed of resources. They expect this first-year event to be on the small sizes. We're just getting going and see how it goes, and perhaps it will grow. Talking about the status of the consultant's work on the beach access. Rick Day of Stand Tech was there to present the committee on their progress. As you know, they're working on two separate but different issues. One are wayfinding, they're the wayfinding signs and beach access parking. Wayfinding signs, they are anticipating the placement of the signage before the coming tour season. They have been reviewing and looking at the parking situation. Don't know if that's going to be as quick of a thing to do. Rick indicated that they do want to have several viable strategies to present to City Council for consideration and debate. When that will happen, we hope it's sooner rather than later. An update on the consolidated dispatch. We're beginning to use the same system the county uses, and in doing so, we've found some of the reasons for the difficulties other users have pointed out now that we've seen them firsthand. In fact, Minister Peter Trucker had an incident in which she was involved, and was going to get a recording of it and response times and all that, so she and the fire chief, police chief, could look at it more closely and determine how that's going to work for us. And I know we'll have improvements for the system. Knowing London, she'll have a grocery list of improvements. Under new business, we discussed the SE documentation, particularly related to 52nd Avenue and other roads. Basically, the SE DOT owns these roads or owns the roadway. If they ever are taken out of the SE DOT system, they would be given to the city. So we think we can put that to bed. Departments of the, I'm sorry, highlights of the departmental report. Since we're using the CAD system that the county uses, we're beginning to get our reports in based on information that the new system is spitting out to them. And these are, calls are prioritized from least serious to most serious. Other things to report. I'll tell you some things about the year. For the year, personnel responded to 960 calls and responded to 525 medical calls, treated 585 patients. That's a lot of work out there for our fire department, and they do a good job in doing that. And at the same time, Mayor Cronin commended the fire department for the work they did with the helicopter, COTI rescue team training that took place off the county park the end of December. And it was also noted that Chief Graham will be attending the 2013 National Hurricane Conference. And if anyone has any questions they would like to ask, please get with her and send them with her. The police report, Chief Buchanan reported that December had been kind of a rough month for the department related to burglaries and larcenies. That was December, and some people were going through some unlocked cars. And I know it's not the holiday season now, people are not looking for money, but there are always people out there looking for money. So please, please, keep your cars locked. It's particularly disturbing when someone, I'll call it breaks in, because they shouldn't be doing it, but if a car is unlocked and gets in and gets a pocketbook or a wallet, for goodness sakes, if you're not going to lock your car, at least take your valuables into the house. Dispatchers, excuse me, responded to 35, 3,544 calls, 2,986 from the police department. For 2012, dispatchers responded to 52,227 calls, 41,320 for the police department. That's an increase of 10 percent over 2011. Chief also noted that one officer has completed three weeks at the academy, and a second officer will begin in March. Right now, we're down two dispatchers. Our next meeting will be at 5:00, Tuesday, February 12th, in the upstairs conference room.
Mr. Mayor. Please, Jimmy.
I was real pleased to see that the Assistant Chief Counsel for SE DOT says that we, a small municipality, has the right to regulate parking on public roads, which is probably going to come into play here when we're working with Stand Tech.
Yeah, he failed to say "subject to their approval."
Right. Damn.
And that is always in their verbiage.
Okay.
Correct?
I got excited when I read that.
Yeah, I know. I mean, but, well, let me just, I'm going to sound like a lawyer, sorry. They only are concerned about safety-related matters in the right of way.
And we are too.
Yeah, I know. So that's why they want to have approval rights, because it's their right of way. They want to make sure anything that's done there is safe and in accordance with their standards, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I'm curious as far as the livability noise issues. Do you have any annual numbers on the number of noise complaints and number of citations?
Do not have those at this time. We'll have them for next month's meeting.
Great. It'd be good to review, because people really want to see how effective that is as far as controlling the problem.
The only other point I want to make is I believe Mount Pleasant, I'm looking at the captain out here, I believe Mount Pleasant's going on to the county dispatch this month. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Not yet, but this month?
At the end of the month.
End of the month. So they'll be on ahead of us, and we'll learn from their experience. Hopefully, it's all good learning. I mean, you know, we're all apprehensive, so. Okay. No other questions? Let's move on. Public Works, please, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Meeting was held Wednesday, January 9th, 5:30. Myself, Councilmember Lott, and Mr. Ward are on that committee. I was elected chair. Councilmember Ward was elected vice chair. Went through department head, gave his report for November and December, and since November and December are typically slow months for the Public Works Department, department head had no overtime. In fact, several of employees took their vacation time, both those holidays. So it's a good time to take it. He also stated that he expects the garbage tonnage to be about 20 tons less than prior years due to our single-stream recycling that's going on the entire island now. And our spending on vehicle maintenance is running just over budget, 59 percent, the past six months. In old business, we had an update on single-stream recycling. We basically want to make sure that the bins and those carts stay out of the when they're done emptied, that they're returned back to the house, that they're pulled back out of the streets. We're going to keep, the department head is going to keep us updated on making sure that's done, and the Charleston County has come up with some education material that they handed out to the rental properties, but we still need to educate the public about that. And we do have some ordinances that might help with that, and we're looking into those as well.
Okay.
Also, we had an update on the dune walkover replacement. There are two dune walkovers that were scheduled for replacement, one at the sea cabins, one at the front beach public restrooms. The front beach public restrooms walkover has been somewhat of a problem for us, the fact that the city's permit request, OCRM, has been denied. And then our, basically, we tried to appeal it, and that's been denied as well. So we're basically going to have to bend to the whims of the OCRM and do what they want exactly. And so, but we're still moving forward on that. And in effort to get the dune walkover permit issued, the staff decided to make the adjustments to the materials and elevation in hopes to get additional with me. We talked about the consideration of the street sweeping contract, and it has passed. And we had a discussion of tree ordinance. This got brought, put on the agenda because there's a resident who has asked for permission to remove a tree because the roots are undermining the foundation of his home. Director Karr has stated that the tree is protected by the city's historic tree preservation ordinance. There's really nothing in our ordinance that states that if the tree starts to do what it is doing, that it can be taken out. The trees are, it's a pretty strict ordinance, and it almost has to render the occupancy unsafe in order for it to be taken out. So we'd like to go through and see if there's anything that we can do. The planning commission is going through and looking at some tree ordinance amendments right now, and we asked them to go ahead and look at making recommendations to the ordinance that would help alleviate some of these problems that might come up in the future without going through and trying to undo a lot of the good work that's been done to our tree ordinance. So they're just one of those situations that you don't normally see, but until it starts to happen, trees get bigger and so.
Did the tree grow up, and 30 years later, you look and say it's in the wrong place? It's too close to the house? It's hitting my foundation?
No.
Okay.
So, yeah, it was somewhat close, and I think it's just at the time. Now it's evading it.
Don't even think.
Yeah, they're going to look at it, though, but we just don't have anything right now to attack it. Results of our CTC funding, the County Transportation Committee allows funding annually. Our 2013 C funds did not make it. We did not get any funding, so we'll try again in the future. We have always been fortunate, though, in getting these funds, and this year, we just didn't, we weren't able to do it. Our next meeting is February 6th in the conference room at 5:30.
I suspect when we get the drainage study engineering done and have a plan, then it's a more meaningful thing for them to evaluate.
Correct.
Hopefully, that's what kicks us into gear on that, and then it'll still be a while before we have enough money to do anything.
You're absolutely right.
Mr. Mayor.
Question.
On the question about the tree, do we not have anything that we could mitigate? Like, if somebody were to take a tree down in a situation like that, they could plant another tree, whether in their yard or elsewhere on public property? Do we have any kind of remedy that way?
I'd have to dig out the tree ordinance, but...
Well, I'm just saying that for everybody to hear at one time.
There's a remedy if you're building a house and there's a tree in the way, but if you take a tree down after the house has been constructed, there's a huge penalty. I don't know what it is. It's both inches and dollars.
If the tree deems a lot unbuildable, then you're able to take the tree down, but you have to replace it with the same size girth throughout, not only in that property, but to our tree bank or tree ordinance.
Replace the biomass that's lost.
Yeah, these trees do grow, and those roots get bigger, and they cause problems. But, all right, thank you.
I'm confident we'll find some way to solve this, but not tonight. Okay. Any other questions for Public Works? Recreation, please.
The rec committee met on January 9th. I was elected chair of the committee, and new member Jimmy Carroll was elected vice chair. In the citizen's comments, the city administrator, Annie Benke, and Sullivan's Island Council Member Mike Perkas asked the committee to consider allowing Sullivan's Island youth to be put on equal footing when it comes to signing up for rec department sports programs. At the moment, off-island residents basically have a two-week window to register for sports teams, and this time starts one week after the registration is open for Isle Palms residents. The folks from Sullivan's Island would like to have the length of time for registration equal to the time given IOP citizens. Since the age group population of both islands that use these sports teams is low, the chance of the teams being filled up and Isle Palms residents missing out doesn't seem to be an issue. The feeling of the committee was that we will be able to work with our sister island and accommodate all the island's youngsters wishing to take part in our programs. After the committee discussion of this, it was referred back to Director Page to come up with a policy which will be discussed at our next meeting. As for our monthly report, of course, winter programs are winding down, and spring is registering now. We talked about our wonderful Holiday Street Festival. That was a huge success. Everyone seemed to agree with a estimated between 2,000 and 3,000 people attending. I think the rec department is already beginning to think about next year and ways to improve and expand the event. Get your calendars out. January 25th is the first middle school dance. The last middle school dance had 250 kids, so if you'd like to join that. Another date to put on your calendar is Doggy Day at the Rec. Always a highlight of the year, and it's before our next city council meeting, so I thought this, February 23rd. You can get your dog licenses, and Dr. Biaskochea will be available, as always, to give rabies shots and other inoculations at a reduced rate, which is, and it's just fun to see all the animals. Our next meeting will be February 11th, 4:00, in the conference room.
Very good. Any questions for recreation?
I'd like to comment on the Holiday Street Festival. I think basically our rec department did a phenomenal job, also considering that what was done, you know, we had a rough year the year before that. And my concern is, this really worked well for the city. I received a lot of positive comments about what an excellent job they did. I don't want to really see this get too large and out of control. One of my big concerns is that this is for the kids, and we had long lines for people waiting to see Santa Claus the whole time, and if we let this thing get too large, we could run into a situation where it runs closer to what we had the year before, which was unacceptable. So I'd love to see us try to maintain the status quo, maybe tweak it, find some improvements where maybe have some additional vendors for food, even though I think our vendors that serve food were very happy with the results. So if it's not broken, let's not fix it, folks. I think we did a great job with that.
Okay.
I agree.
Very good. Thank you. Let's hear from Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee met on January 8th. Administrator Tucker called a meeting together and acknowledged the press and public had been duly notified in accordance with the Freedom of Information. First on the agenda was nomination of the chair and a vice chair. Councilmember Stone nominated Councilmember Thomas for the chair, which was seconded by Councilmember Battelli and unanimously approved. Chair Thomas nominated Councilmember Stone as the vice chair, which was unanimously approved. Minutes from the previous meeting, November 5th, were passed unanimously. There were no citizen's comments. Next was the evaluation process for the administrator was discussed. The forms for the subjective portion of the evaluation were received and distributed to the committee members and delivered to the remaining council members' mailboxes for instructions for completion and return. The subjective portion of the appraisal is based on the grader's opinion of the administrator's performance and is worth 15 percent of the final. Next, the objective portion of the appraisal was discussed. These are the performance criteria supported by factual documented performance like meeting or beating budgets, completing certain tasks, such as operating manual updates. The objective portion of the represents 85 percent of the grade. Administrator Tucker distributed documentation showing the city's performance to established measured goals. It was stated and documented that the city met and exceeded all performance goals established at the beginning of the year. The next step is to meet with the department heads to establish goals. Our city administrator's evaluation is complete and was presented to her this morning. She received an 85, which was a maximum for the objective portion by meeting or beating 100 percent of her defined goals, and a 12.2 out of 15 for the subjective portion for a total grade of 97.2. I want to thank all the council members who did their job as far as participating in the subjective portion. Last year, we didn't have quite the turnout, so I'm glad everybody got out. Congratulations to our administrator, and thank you. You're the right person for the right job at the right time. Thanks. And the sweepstakes winner... And the sweepstakes winners, Recreation is Will McElhen.
McElhen.
Police is John Cleland. Public Works is Joseph Ankrum. And Fire Department is Corey Bullock. Our next meeting is 9:00 AM Thursday, February 7th in the conference room.
Any questions for Personnel? All right, let's move on to Real Property, please.
Real Property met on January 10th, City Hall Conference Room. Councilmembers Buchanan, Loftus, and Stone were present. I was nominated the Chairperson and Councilmember Buchanan as Vice Chair. The minutes were approved. We had citizens' comments. Jonathan Yates of Hellman Yates made a presentation on behalf of AT&amp;T for the Monopole that you heard recently about that is not going to be moving forward, so I'm gonna move right on past.
Page after page.
Yeah, there was discussion, discussion, discussion. And then we went to, let's see, Monopole, excuse me. Okay, yeah, we were gonna do all kinds of fun things with that. Comments from Marina tenants, none were present. Old Business, discussion of the RFP on the proposals received for the municipal parking lots, which you heard, which were all rebid. We had lots of discussion and passed all kinds of things to get that to Ways and Means, which you heard is being redid. Should be back January 31st. We are anxiously anticipating that. Discussion of Title Wave Dock Replacement and Reconfiguration of Balance of Docks. There were several meetings on this in the past. The city administrator attempted to put something together. They were a little conflicting. And so what we did is we had a motion for the administrator to proceed, produce an RFP to replace the title dock it carried unanimously. So we're looking at replacing that pretty soon or getting bids anyway. Status of the permit modification for the Shoal Management Project. The city administrator reported that the OCRM has contacted Coastal Science and Engineering, who has been dialoguing with a Corps of Engineers indicating that there will not be problems with what the city has proposed on the permit modifications. The permit modification should be out on the 15-day public comment period on the request for the time extension to the two permits coinciding. CSE was reminded that legislation was passed a couple of years ago, years ago, that all permits obtained in a certain window of time would be excluded, extended to allow for people to do their projects once the economy had recovered from the downturn. So we, that was a positive move. We don't have any issues. Permits are good. Miscellaneous reports, Marina rents. It was reported that all were current with the exception of one. An update was presented at the Ways and Means meeting. Next meeting is 5:30 PM Thursday, February 7th in the conference room across the hall.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
I have one point. With Coastal Science and Engineering, we've had some dialogue, staff has had some dialogue because of the erosion we've experienced on the, on the west end of the island. And the question is, should we do another survey of that particular area to find out what's happened as a result of Sandy et cetera? In fact, I have some, I have some pictures. It's more than that area, but there's there and some Folly Beach stuff, et cetera. I'm gonna ask Real Property Committee to consider what Coastal Science and Engineering can do, the cost benefit. I mean, it obviously costs money to run another survey type for that area. Look at the cost, what the benefit would be. The more data we have, the better I feel. And there's been a lot of change there since the last survey they made, which was, I think, July 4th weekend, sort of that period, end of June, first week of July. So in the last six months, there's been a lot of change in that end of the island, as well as, and that's some of the pictures there from Folly Beach, what's happened in the last, last couple of months. So I'd like you to consider it and then if it's worthy, bring it back to Ways and Means and Council to consider if we want to do an interim survey for that area just to have more data. What are they scheduled? When is their next scheduled survey? Not till next summer. Okay, got it.
Well, even if we, if we acted February or probably March where something actually came together.
They can do it quickly. In fact, that was one of the, the inputs today. They, they could be down here next week. Of course, we don't have it on the agenda. We don't, you know, the monies aren't, haven't been decided. They, they look at tide conditions, et cetera. So I figure, you know, if the tide's right next week, it'll be right again in three or four weeks. So, yeah, you know, so.
Always comes back, doesn't it? It's coming around.
So if it, if it's the right thing to do, we'll leave it with the Real Property to start the dialogue and then, then we'll move from there to.
I'll ask them to put that on the agenda.
No, they, they can do the work. When, when you get the reports, it's always the hard part. But this would be a, a, a small effort, so the, the reports should be quickly coming. Okay. No other questions for Real Property? Let's move on. You have in your package, reports from boards and commissions, accommodations, tax advisory committee. Sandy's with us if we have any questions. No questions? Board of Zoning Appeals and the most recent meeting of the Planning Commission. Questions or issues with them? Nothing heard? Let me move on to bills already in your possession. This is a bring-up second reading of Ordinance 2013-01, an ordinance ratifying the city of Isle of Palms conveyance by foot claim deed of all rights titles, interests in, into the property identified as the remaining section of 14th Avenue to pastime amusement company. I'll make a motion to approve second reading and suspend the reading. I'd like to move for the changes, that's what I should do first. Move to amend the ordinance as originally read to the ordinance currently in your possession. I call it the blue line corrections. So I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank everybody for paying attention to that. Not giving away the whole.
For drawing it to our attention.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None heard. Okay, so now you have in your possession, Ordinance 2013-01 as amended. I'll move to approve for second reading and suspend the reading of the ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Linda, can we see the pictures down here?
Oh, sure. Oh, I'm sorry. I took, I have the brakes on them. No, no.
Okay.
All right, we're into bills, new, new bills in our possession, first reading by Title Only Ordinance 2013-02. This is a preparatory step and this is, we need to, per our attorney's direction, we need to issue or enter into leases through ordinance. And so this would be a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the city administrative editor to enter into and execute necessary documents for leasing of our parking facility. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? None heard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next in your package, you have the schedule. It's like over the dentist and finding out he wants to have you come back a series of times. You have in your possession now the proposed budget scheduling for this next fiscal year, FY14. It gives dates and duties as we have done in the past as to when the staff is going to be prepared to come forward with committees to develop capital budgets and then work our way through the entire budgeting cycle, all the way up to April 23rd when city council was first reading of the FY14 budget. So is there anything that's, that needs to be amended in this? If you find it now or later, you can come forward. We have months of work to do, so the staff is fully engaged once we get started here and we'll be meeting with the various committees to bring that material forward. Thank you. No questions on that. Let me move on to item B on, under miscellaneous, which is known as a report on collection of state accommodations taxes. And I'm gonna report along with the administrator since we were both in attendance. There are two issues here. This is both the collection of state accommodations tax as well as the reporting of the accommodations tax from the state to the appropriate municipals. And from a collection standpoint, well, let me, let me back up. We attended a meeting that was called on January 10th. Every member, every municipal in the county was represented and the county was represented. And in particular, the Charleston Visitors Bureau was there also because they have a horse in this fight as well. I should say a dog in this fight. Horse in this race or a dog in, anyhow. First thing we discussed is, is the process of collection. And I think Sandy brought to our attention a while ago that Hilton had his taking on initiative. So we ought to summarize what we do to make sure that collections are, are coming through appropriately. If somebody on the island rents their property for a short-term rental and, and we find out about it and they don't have a business license, we take the appropriate steps, our rental license. We take those steps to sending the building department out there and they receive a citation if necessary. And that citation, of course, is costly because they have to come before the judge and the judge is not sympathetic. Before they can get a rental license in this city, they have to produce documentation that says they have already registered with the state to pay their, their state sales tax as well as their state accommodations tax. And in addition, they have to prove that they have registered with the county, have to give us their registration number. With those two pieces of, those two numbers, we will then issue then the appropriate rental license that will indicate that they are renting their property and that they're paying the appropriate tax. And then annually, the building department bumps up what their reported revenue is with what has been reported through the accommodations tax system to make sure that everything's on the up and up. So this is something we've been doing for a number of years now, four, five years, and it's proven well. The staff and the building department searches websites and any other source they can find to find anybody that potentially listing their property that just doesn't have a business license or rental license. And then appropriately notified, et cetera. So we catch them as, as we find them. If anybody knows of anybody that's renting their property on a short-term basis and doesn't think they have a rental license, they can just call the building department. They'll confirm or take appropriate actions if that's the case. So we're used as a role model frankly for other communities, certainly in this county since most people don't take, go to the steps that, that we go to to make sure that everybody is paying appropriately. And glad to see Hilton had his, hired some summer students, I gather, to start researching websites and other things to catch up with people that have been renting their property in Hilton. And I guess it's been beneficial to them to a large extent.
Couple hundred thousand?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's a big enterprise, but yeah, they pay for themselves plus, plus over. So I think from a collection standpoint, we're well on top of it and will, we have dialogues with other communities too as to what our process is and hopefully they can learn from us. But we get then to the second phase, which was the Department of Revenue having collected these funds and then their remittance back to the appropriate municipals. We find that that has not worked well. In fact, there's at least $600,000 that was remitted to the county that the county says, hey, it's not ours. It really belongs to some municipal authority within the jurisdiction of Charleston County, but it's not Charleston County's. So unfortunately Charleston County proceeded to send it back to the state. So we wrote a letter, I signed a letter along with the Chair of County Council to the Department of Revenue and to the Treasurer back, I looked up the date, it was, it was October 10th, just before the hacking became public. And we've received no response, advising them of the fact that there's a big error sitting out there that's, falls right on their doorstep. Obviously hacking has taken over, in fact, there's a new head of the Department of Revenue as a consequence of all that. But we're moving forward. That was part of the purpose of calling this meeting together. Everybody sat down. There were hotels represented there as, as part of the body that has to report to the DOR and, and they report in multiple ways. And I know some of the people here at the council do reporting also. You can report electronically, you can report in paper form. And apparently at least one guy there says he reports through a third party. So the DOR is receiving all sorts of different inputs. And there's different structures for how they then decide which municipality gets it. And we don't know what that structure is. We just know that if it's not reported absolutely meticulously correct, they don't do anything to correct it, even though they know it could be an error. They don't do anything to correct it. It's up to the sender, et cetera. We all sat around, there are stories. We have our own stories. City of Charleston had numerous stories. Every community had at least one or more stories of, of errors and omissions at the DOR level. We're now pulling all those issues together and the intent is to cause a meeting between DOR and representatives from Charleston community, the county as well as municipalities to figure out a permanent fix going forward. I don't know what that fix is. I don't know how the DOR works. I know how complicated their life must be, receiving as many inputs they have from, from so many different people. But we're waiting to, to cause that meeting to come together. The Charleston Visitors Bureau is, is deeply involved for a number of reasons, partly because it's the state ATAX, which is part of their funding source. And so suddenly they find that they're missing a, a big piece or a piece, not necessarily a big piece, a piece of income that would be flowing to them that isn't flowing to them. So once, hopefully we get that all corrected before this time next year. I don't know. But if we have to make change at the legislative level, the CDB says they'll make that happen also. Jimmy?
A question. Is this the state accommodations tax or is this the county council?
State accommodations tax.
The county system works very well for the municipals.
We've always had a question about the county system because as you all well know, you're sending your state ATAX and then you've gotta send your county and your Isle of Palms ATAX to North Charleston, which is 1%. And I've never understood, and I'd like to see that changed, to where we would concur with the city's hospitality tax regulations and rules, to where they just send the 2% to the county council, to, to County Charleston, and they send the 1%, which is generated on Isle of Palms, to the building department, as is our hospitality tax. That system's fine, but I still don't understand how that was, why that was set up and why, why.
Well, simply for administrative purposes. We had the accommodations tax long before we had the hospitality tax. There's one check from the, from the payer to the county and it's divided two-thirds.
Right, two-thirds and one-third.
From ours. Other, other communities, it's, the City of Charleston, it's two, two and two, we're at two and one. But the county has, has actually worked very well with us. I was trying, at this meeting, I tried to get the county to collect the state tax and then remit it back to the state because there's a Robin Hood provision that the state applies. I don't want to bore you with all that, but.
Well, you're not boring me. I love you. I'd just like to see us get our money faster.
We, we get it within, the county pays us within a, well, the week after the close of the month. The state, the state, it's.
Is that all the local option, transportation, school district, or is it the main 6%?
It's the state sales tax, the local option sales tax, the county transportation tax.
Right, eight and a half percent.
Yeah, well, it adds up, the total amount counting our county portion. Our portion is 12 and a half.
12 and a half for everything. It's nine and a half for that and three for the other.
The state, state collects their.
Okay, so the county's not the problem.
County's not the problem. The state collects the tax, then they remit a piece of that to us. They hold back.
Yeah, I understand.
For paying Robin Hood, but they also hold back more because they don't know who's gonna be doing what during the course of the year. And they always true up in the fourth quarter. So the first quarter is always light relative to the activities, relative to what we see in the county, for instance. And then they true it up in the fourth quarter. So they've basically held our money for, for a year.
I guess it's just the further the money gets away, the harder it is to get it back.
And get it back after.
Right. Well, okay, thank you very much.
We're, we've entered into the fight. I'm not sure how much armament we have. We're taking them on and it's good to see that the rest of the municipals in the, in the county, at least our county. the county, at least our county, have the same problems and are willing to, to take this on. I mean, our problem relatively speaking is small compared to the City of Charleston and North Charleston seem to represent, so. But we've, we've led the fight and we'll continue to lead it, so.
Mr. Mayor. I do think our city and Debbie and staff do a great job on being the squeaky wheel to keep our money coming back to us. I think we proved that this past year. We gotta keep it up.
Well, we entered into, off the subject here to a certain extent, but we had, the Charleston County Mayor has met, this is probably a year ago, year and a half ago, and said, wait a minute, the county is doing something. They're keeping more money than they really should, given where the state of hospitality was, the industry was. And so we appealed to the county at that time as, as one voice. And they started paying us back to the level that they had been in the past. So you gotta pay attention to it or else, as Jimmy says, the further away it gets, the harder it is to get it back, so. It's, it's all good once it gets here, but man, it's tough getting there.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it for this. No other questions? Okay. The last item on our, why don't we adjourn and then take the photographs? Is that all right with you? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn and seconded. Our next meeting is February 26th at 7:00. Hope all will be present and accountable and enjoy the month ahead. So thank you. We're adjourned.